Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/49countynewsTV.
It's one o'clock and we've called our meeting. We've got several items on the agenda today. I promised Mr. Cobbin we'd take his matter up first and let me kind of give you the nature of this. Mr. Cobbin and I have had several discussions concerning his need. And we have a road area out there around his property called Cobbin Circle. It's got two openings, two thoroughfares of major streets. And he's going to be requested and giving us his reasons for wanting to close one leg of that circle. So, Mr. Cobbin, I'm going to give you the floor and let you kind of show the council what you had in mind and give us your reasons.
Okay. That's where that property right there, make sure I can get it straight up and down. This is, uh... This is part of my old family farm, that was when Granddaddy's place, and it was divided up. This is cousins here, cousins on this side, me, cousins here, part of the old farm. And back in the seventies, if you look right here, Cobbin Circle, my uncle, he was a heavy machine operator. And he cut a road in here back in the seventies and since then, city is annexed that area. I don't think it was the city there. But marked in red is my property. Joint Regency Place and Highway eighty-one. Here's the other entrance to Cobbin Circle off of eighty-one. That access is this house, which is my aunt's house, and my cousin's house here. And then sometime in the past, my uncle allowed the Watsons to come off here with their driveway. So, they wouldn't have to come off of this street back into other neighborhood. So, what I'm intending to do or what I'd like to ask if we can do right here, if this property line is five hundred and thirty-nine feet, comes off of Regency Place. You see what I'm talking about right here? That's where my property line is. My cousin and my aunt has access here, the Watsons have access here, and that's all. This is vacant, this woods.
So, you didn't tell me that.
I didn't think that, uh... This is, uh... My landmark in red, this is cousin, this is my aunt, this is another cousin, which is vacant woods. And this is Regency Place that borders my property.
That goes into Oak Hills subdivision.
Right, that's the first road, Quills on the...
Eighty-one goes by Eddie Gottsy's shop and Jay Brown Pottery and comes out over there on the, uh... On the road that has Baptist Church over there. Two Baptist churches, Rocky Grove and, uh...
Right.
And, uh, New York Baptist Church going down the road.
I developed that subdivision, I remember when, yeah, that road didn't go on through there much, handled anything. I had...
Which leg of it did you want to stop? What's your call? Which leg of the road did you want?
Coming off of Regency Place, this five hundred and thirty-nine feet right here, I would like to stop it there. I want to build fences around my property here. Another reason I just built a pond here. And it's a little bit of a liability because these kids, I've called the kids out there late at night. They'll sneak in there and get in my pond and things, and it's beginning to worry me. And this road, why I don't know, but people seem like that it's a thoroughfare. And they'll just dart in here, the kids will, and just fly through there, they kill... I've got three border collies, they've killed one off, ran over another, and he lived through it. So, I ain't no way to stop them, and I don't intend to build a gate. But if they didn't have, they think it was a thoroughfare, could stop right there, they'd learn that, they'd stop on it down the road. Throwing trash out my side of the road and... For those reasons and sense, there's access to my cousin's place here. And then I got access here, I can't really see any reason I would interfere with anybody else's travel.
You didn't stop with those Watsons out here, with your cousin who has houses in there?
I haven't lately. I wanted to check with y'all first and see if...
Does anybody live there?
That was the, uh... That's my shop.
Okay.
This is the old house place. I built a house for this, let me get my parents here, right here where this exit is. That's where I built my new house, built that in sixteen. And the pond's out here by eighty-one. And, uh... I was just thinking, you know, it don't, it don't create any problems, really. It just stops people that don't really need to be on that road, throwing trash and running too fast out there. And right here, I thought about, if y'all saw a problem with this, like the garbage man turning it around. Like I say, I don't intend to block that road, put a gate or anything up. Garbage man comes up here and goes around. And this driveway goes from my shop in blue. I've got a thirty-two foot covert right there, he's got plenty of room. There's a driveway going to my shop and then a driveway to my house. So, as far as meter readers and garbage trucks, there's no problem. That's thirty-two foot wide drive, we can back in and out, you know, pick up the garbage. And I just want to, I really do want to do this and, uh, pack each other up.
So, you're wanting closed, but you're not wanting blocked?
No, no, I'm not going to block it. No, it Regency Place, it would be...
Right, because in the past, all the road closures that I can remember, the roads are actually blocked. They're, they're... They're blocked. I mean, it's, once, if this road was closed, it would be blocked. So, basically, what you're wanting us to do is to leave it open, but to not have it busy.
Block it right here, have it, uh, like not, no thoroughfare, like putting that sign, dead end, no thoroughfare. And it be blocked right there at my property line.
Okay, so you're wanting your entrance to be from Regency? And nobody to be able to come to your property from eighty-one?
Correct. They're making that loop off of eighty-one or either off of Regency, and they're zipping around through here. And there's one thing I want to go, I would like to let y'all know. When I was building my house, this road was so bad and rutted and washed out that I couldn't get in and out of this driveway that goes from my shop here. And I called the city and talked to them about it, real nice man, I think his name is from my, maybe? He came out there and he put tar and gravel on that road and he fixed those ruts. Ever seen it? And at that time, I didn't have an intention of closing it. And it might look like I wanted the city to make me a driveway, but that's not it. I had no intention of closing it until I started having these problems. So, I would offer the city, whatever the cost was, to tar and gravel that first five hundred and thirty-nine feet, I'd be glad to reimburse the city for that. You know, because it is the tar and gravel driveway now, where it was all rutted out and couldn't hardly drive on it. So, that's not the intention, that's not why I called them to fix the driveway and then say I want it closed. So, I want you to be clear on that.
Appreciate that. Uh, I don't know, street closures, does this have to go through the process of the public hearing, advertising?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd have to go through every time.
Just like we did with the church, those roads we closed at the churches. We'd have to run it in paper and then have a public hearing and just go through that whole process. I know we'd have to get Scott involved.
And definitely, before we even did any of that, I think we would need to talk with the garbage man. Because if your house is here and up here's where you're saying they're going to turn around, it may be that if this gets closed, you're going to have to truck your garbage all the way down to here. If there's not a place, you know, depending on the distance from here to here where you say they can turn around. So, we'll definitely need to check about that.
That's, uh, twenty foot from the edge of my driveway to the house.
Well, see, I, I got familiar with it, so...
And they could turn around on my driveway because this is about thirty-two feet wide. But they're sitting right there to be easier for them to just make that dart into the shop road and back out. Rather than, well, however they want to, they're going to turn around, but it's available for them right there.
Mike, you got it on your garbage, you have a truck that can go straight through there, I'm sure it does.
Yeah, it just makes a circle.
Yeah.
In the case Mr. Cobbin was talking about, unless he, unless he, you brought it down to Regency. I've got a copy of that. Unless you brought it down to Regency, what we, what, what it would force us to do is go up here, turn around, and come back this way, and then go down and get this. So, we'd be backtracking. But if you could bring it to Regency, now, have you got a road that cuts through, completely through here, that goes past your shop and comes out on eighty-one? I thought I saw...
I have gravel put there and I can get to eighty-one from my house. Yeah, I can.
So, would you object to us, I mean, is that a road that a, that a bare garbage truck on it or not?
I don't think so, because see, what feeds my pond comes off of the hill and it's rutted and that's pretty rough. Do with that. But I don't mind a bit taking my garbage truck right there. It's no problem.
Yeah, that would be, as far as the garbage, that would, that would help us out a lot.
Yeah, I can take it there, no problem.
We try not to backtrack and stuff as much as we can, time and factor and fueling off when we have to.
Sounds good to me, I'll take care of that, I mean, that's right there.
So, Mike, what are we going to get into closing that road there? Can we, can we close that road? I mean, it's through, been there for years, I'm sure.
Well, I mean, it'd be, it'd be up to the neighbors and whatever the legal aspects are that it are.
It's going to be more than just us, we can't say that it was closed.
Right, you'd have to have, I'm sure...
It's going to be a lot more than that, yes.
All the cousins to agree to it.
Yeah, yours is going to get into more than you think.
Does the truck go on up to Mr....
Go on, oh, Mr. Watsons, yes, okay. Yeah, and I'm not sure if, she may put hers down at the end of her, the drive that goes to her house is a route drive. I think she may put it down where it meets the, go up the... Matter of fact, I'm pretty sure she does, because there's a trailer out there, I believe that she, like an old truck.
Like that, uh, building, like a garage, that haunted hut looking building?
Well, no, that one's on this corner of her driveway, you call it a circle, there's no, like a pickup bed that sits down there. And I bet she puts her garbage in that, if I'm not mistaken.
About his mill, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, we're not against, but there's a whole lot more to it, I think, than what you think now, than it might, it can't...
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a process you have to go through. It's not something that we could just do, just do, you know? We've gone through three or four or maybe in the last few years. And of course, all of those have had a fiscal barrier put up to where the people can't go through. And I, did I understand, did you say that you were still going to put one at the end of your property line up the hill?
No.
Okay. So, that's the only way you're going to stop traffic from going all the way through. If, if, if the city just says, you know, we've abandoned this road, it belongs to him, that's... I mean, that don't mean anything about it.
If you just put dead end, the sign, I put one say dead end.
It's going to have to have a fiscal barrier. If, if not, you're defeating the purpose that you're wanting to do.
Are you setting a barrier other than where I have to put it?
No, 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 no. If you put one at the upper, upper end of your property line, either.
Yeah, that's what I was putting on it.
I guess, yeah, right there, that would...
Well, that would...
Yeah.
You're not saying it's got to be blocked at Regency Place, you said it's blocked up here.
Yeah, I mean, that, for your purposes, you made a fiscal barrier up there to stop the traffic.
I'll put one over it too.
What he's saying is, it doesn't matter how many signs we put up, people are still going to come down there and they're going to hit to the end and then they're going to have to turn around and go back.
Until you're used to it, can't speed through there and then they'll stop doing that.
We hope.
I wouldn't go down there if you want, I can go through there. Is there any question about where it is or how it lies or what?
I think we got the concept working out the advantage of works. Now, in the case of this last road we accommodated during the public hearing process, some people had some businesses down there that we had to make concerns for, and, and we did. We're having dividing covets for turning purposes. And we're having little power poles and different things just to accommodate that need. We, we're making it work, but it was a pretty involved process. And we want to be clear on what we're getting into, uh, helping you with your matters, Mr. Cobbin. And, and we see legitimate concerns on your part. It's just that we've got to make sure that we can do what you're requesting, Mr. Cobbin.
Well, tell me something, does this road here come through that subdivision over there? Oh, you're coming here and going over to eighty-one. Is that the road that comes through the subdivision?
No, uh, this is, this road here?
Yeah.
Now, subdivision begins right here with this road, that's the subdivision.
That's the subdivision over here, the boundary of subdivision and all open?
Yeah, and this right here is twelve acres of vacant land that my cousin owns, trees, woods, no, no roads, anything here.
But the subdivision's on down here.
Right, here's subdivision.
Yeah, that's where, yeah, I built all of that subdivision in there. And I thought this was the road that goes all the way through here.
Now, this is Regency Place that, that got, it comes out to Steel here.
Yes, right.
And it goes through your subdivision and then it comes out on eighty-one and go left or right.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought, yeah, yeah.
All of the property you were mentioning was owned by Cobbin Brothers, Cobbin and grandpa, I guess, and all that. And it's come on down to, what, three thousand acres?
It's developed, it's developed down to a hundred years, I guess.
Yeah, okay. Have you got any questions, thanks for about?
I know with the other road closings we did, it was kind of like those streets were, were they abandoned as city streets and turned over to the property owner for maintenance and stuff, Mike? Isn't that how we did the?
Yeah, we, we turned up to the rock there and that, we don't do any maintenance or anything like that after that point.
And you do on both sides of the street? Because otherwise, half would go to you and half would go to the other person.
Yeah, here's property line right here.
So, you own both sides of the street?
Yeah, both sides of the street, all in red here. And this is the property line, almost rest of them are red marker, but that is, you see the property line now.
Any other questions for Mr. Cobbin? Wade, did you have anything?
No, I, I understand what he's talking about.
Obviously, I do.
Yeah, I see what he's talking about.
Okay.
Eddie?
Any, any other questions or comments? Well, we'll certainly take this into consideration, Mr. Cobbin. We'll be, we'll be back in touch soon. We'll, we'll need to ask Scott to join us in a session. I talked to the Gaskell today and mentioned that you were going to be up on the agenda. You and me and him would talk some also. And he said that he would get into the mix and help us to walk through this. So, he was, they were coming to the meeting today, but he said he would get involved. So, thank you for coming.
Appreciate it, Josh.
Can we, can we hang on to these maps, close?
I've got six on my, oh, six.
I've got enough.
One's missing to that.
Thank you very much.
Got one out, and here you come to school with one. Appreciate it, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Cobbin. Barla had a matter that she wants to discuss with the council next and myself. So, we'll give her a place on the meeting today this time.
I've been having trouble with my old software.
Just come on up here and then I'll talk.
And so, I've been looking into new software. And I went to Hayleyville, they've had it, this, this new software for about ten years and love it. So, I went over and sat a couple hours with them. And she showed me everything, they're a court clerk. It's real compatible and everything. The one I have now, they cater to the big courts, like Montgomery and Huntsville. And so, they change up all the time for, to accommodate the bigger courts. When I have a problem, they keep putting me off and putting me off. Anyway, it's just gotten really frustrating. So, I've been shopping around and found this group. This group will be even cheaper than the one I have now. And even the whole initial, they're six thousand, they're cheaper than the one I'm having, than I had now. I think theirs was like seven thousand dollars. And this, that was a... Do you remember, it's probably what, fifteen, fourteen? Yeah, I'd say fourteen or... No, 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 it's, it's probably been in there about five, six years, I guess, I've had it. And when I got it, I was in an old one that needed, they weren't connected with the state automatically and stuff. So, they had, so they, but they wouldn't take the old stuff and put it in the new stuff I'm working with now. This company will. This company will take all of the old software and put it in their software. And it's still just the six thousand dollars. The old company charges us quarterly and it's seven hundred and fifty quarterly, comes to three thousand a year. This one will be twenty-five hundred, so it's, it's cheaper. But, um... It's just getting to the point where the old software is just, uh, just more of a...
What do those people who have it say it's done for them? How, how are they functioning with it?
I, I see the list down there that some of them that was, you know, kind of close by. And they all really enjoy, you know, like it, and they've had it for a long time. It's not something new come along. Hayleyville, what she's showing me and everything, it's just, it seems like it's just one step, you know? Where now, if I want to print off the monthly reports or a warrant, it takes me seven steps to get one thing printed off. Where it didn't before, he just keeps, the old software just keeps tweaking it and tweaking it and learning, you know? So, anyway, because when you get on that computer, people are at the window and stuff and you just need to get it done and not have them stand there forever.
How much training will we have to do to change over?
They will come, they come and do it all.
All right, are you the only one that's got the train on it or do we have to train anyone else?
No, just me. And that, it shows you the breakdown right off the bat, like I think it said fifteen hundred dollars or something. And then he'll come in and do all the training and everything, and then it'll be the...
What are we going to do if you get sick?
Uh, I've got that covered. Erica is coming over, she'll be in my office to answer phones and to take payments.
But she can't use this.
I'm talking about who's going to use this if something happens to you.
Well, yeah.
I mean, when you go...
I mean, they will come in and...
Sounds like we're down, if you're down, we're down.
Well, no, I mean, you can still take payments and answer the phone and, and, you know, do that kind of stuff, but...
But we need to have somebody else trained to do it, wherever you're doing it. I don't want to have just one person that can operate anything, because you, like me, we could fall dead tomorrow, you know? Then they're the, they would be, you know? You understand, I'm not, you understand what I'm saying.
But, I mean, you have to have them state certified, they'll have to go to like six classes in Montgomery. And I don't know how much, that's been so long ago that I've had that, so I don't know how much that all lives. And they have to pass a test each time and everything to be certified.
I, I hope you understand, I'm not...
Right, I know.
It's just that if something happens to you, we're dead, we don't have anything. And we had to hire somebody else and send them to school, trying, it's like we need somebody else trained.
Oh, when I started, Anna had only been there a couple of weeks. She hadn't even been to class and I'd started and she left. So, she didn't know nothing, I had stacks to go through. But anyway, um...
But what about the Earl Cross?
Erica, yeah.
She could, could she pick it up and go up with you if something, you're going to be out for a few days or...
Yeah, she's done it before.
She knows enough about it, she could operate it.
Oh, yeah.
Even though she's not certified or whatever, but she, she could run it.
Oh, yeah.
Where is this at? Where's it, is it?
An old city hall, the crossroads.
It works.
Oh, okay.
There's Kathy and then there's Erica.
So, you're saying she can use the software? So, she needs to go through the training when they come?
No, she, she could, but she's going to go through the training to do that. But she can, she's been in my office enough, but she knows how everything works and where everything's at.
Right, but to use this, I think your question was, if you're out for a few days and Erica needs to use this software in order to do that, she's going to have to go through the training when they come to teach you how to use it. How long, is that like a day training or a week training, or how long are they going to stay with you to teach you?
Well, when I have to do it, I go to Montgomery and it is usually a two-day...
No, I, just to train to use this software, how long's that going to take?
I'm not sure, they're coming to my office to do it.
So, maybe not...
You want Erica to sit in there and watch you do it?
That's the question, yeah!
That's falling with me, but you've got to... You've got to be certified as far as the state, the state can come in on us.
So, to answer your question, no, Erica can't do this if she's out for a few days.
But I have everything, like payments and everything, I have a file and I have a sheet, a running total. And she knows how to do all that, and my money drawer's right there. So, I mean, it's really, all you do with the software is put it in when you need, you know, when you can to close things out, so the state will know it's closed. Or more for the warrants. The state knows about warrants, the driving suspended license, things like that. They don't, they don't care about the daily money, the state doesn't.
They keep writing us.
Well, what you're saying, you're going to teach Erica how to do your job.
Yeah, well, she pretty, yeah, she's done it before in the past.
So, you're going, she can't run it?
Yeah, Angela did it when she worked over there.
Well, we might just send her back up there.
Okay.
What, turn the off across the house?
She is the, uh, secretary of district attorney.
Okay. I guess...
I know what you're thinking. I'm not gonna say because I've said it and I'm thinking, well, if we have that happen, then we'll deal with it, I guess.
What's that?
Is it in your pocket?
No.
What's wrong with that?
I swap pockets with you.
Try so much of that. In other words, this will work even if you get sick and what you say.
Right, right.
And she can operate it, yeah. Well, don't you get sick and sure enough die on us.
I hope I'm...
Wait, wait two more years.
I'm over all that.
You know, I said wait two more years.
Two years.
Where we going?
So, yeah.
So the total cost including training, uh, is it six thousand or is it eighty-four hundred?
It's the six thousand. See right at the first line at the top there or the...
Six thousand includes installation and training.
Uh-huh.
Customization, data transfer, signature payment, years, and a year, one year support.
It looks like that six thousand with an initial, we pay like fifteen hundred down and then forty-five at the end.
Uh-huh.
And then after that first year, it'll be twenty-four hundred dollars.
A year?
A year.
Yeah, where we're paying three thousand now a year.
Is your computer gonna support this software or are you gonna have to unmute?
No. No, it'll support it. That's the old Bob that I brought that. That's who we pay now.
We pay three thousand a year before ongoing maintenance.
Yeah, they do it quarterly, I think. They do it. I don't know.
Seven fifty.
But the, this new company would just do it yearly.
Don't look to me like it could go wrong. It's like, they find to me. What do you think of it later? Pretty much that.
In time, they pay for it. Difference in the...
Let's just say, for instance, um, that some of the laws change. Does that mean that your software can be updated?
Yes. And see, I asked this too. I asked, I said, now listen, I said, my old software, they're constantly worrying about the big courts, you know? And they said they have a basic format. They'll put it on my computer. And then when I get in there and start, uh, working with it, they will tweak it to my standard, you know, specs. What I want and what I don't want. So they can do that. Where this company now, he just basically says tough. That's what Montgomery and Hoover and Coleman, or, you know, the bigger, uh, courts want.
So this puts home, Mr. Cavan?
And he said even I might like things certain ways and Hayleyville, who's the same, you know, pretty much the same size, they might not like that, you know? So he's not gonna do that to Hayleyville, you know? So...
And they like it. They don't have...
They've had it for ten years and they love it, yeah.
Well, that's pretty good.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
You're gonna track record.
Yeah, they are.
Is it, is it ETA dated or...?
Is my software now.
Oh, it is, okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we use at Phil Campbell.
Mm-hmm.
Does anyone have any other, um, specific questions about the software or the method of the changeover or backup and this kinda things? Any other questions?
She's answering everything for me.
I, I think I have a pretty clear picture.
Okay.
Now, how long would you stay in this training if I'm gone, would it be?
Oh, that's for the school. I haven't done that.
I'm talking about if somebody...
If somebody, um, it was six, six times. Did, you know, they don't do it all like all at once.
Oh, you don't, so we stay a week?
No, uh-uh. They do like two days, you know, and then like a couple months later, they do another two day.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Cause they know that, you know, most of them are, like I was, I, I was working.
Okay, yeah.
So, or I should say, I was trying to figure things out. So, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, thank you, Marla.
Thank you all.
Appreciate you.
I'm going back.
Coming. Appreciate your work you do for us.
Thanks.
I'll correct you now. I've got, I picked up my wife's phones. What's the reason I didn't register now? That's probably her calling.
Rodney, let's talk about your subject matter for today next, but I'll let you come up and, uh, talk with us. You may want to, uh, share some information and that kinda thing.
Well, I say a picture's worth a thousand words. I got a picture.
You got a picture?
I got a picture.
I'm good at looking.
Who put these on your...
Not your picture, you...
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm not including. I've got a truck that we haul the jet rig around with. It's, and it's a eighty-six model Ford truck. Was bought used back in whenever. Oh, trucks got to be used.
We almost got to the scene where it worked.
We, yeah, we had, we had to push it.
And the guys were pushing it for us to run it.
And boy, that's what I call bringing your picture to deal with if something dies. When you got four men pushing the truck down the road with a job. I said it back. Do you want me to tell you how to do it? He gets his free drive.
It's worth pretty high. That picture's worth a thousand words. If I was over there, they're straining that.
They, they don't like that, I don't know.
But why you look at that?
Is this the same truck, same thing we talked about before? This truck?
I've done that before with him.
And Mike? Back there, okay.
I haven't read it. But it, it's, like I said, it's an eighty-six model, thirty-three years old. It's got over, well, over three hundred thousand miles on it. We're, we're to the point now where we're trying to, trying to park it on the hill when we stop somewhere to run the server. We felt first gear is about gone and we have, sometimes we have to push it off and start it second.
All right, let's get on now what you're gonna buy. I think you, you convinced me that you had a truck.
And, and I knew what Mike had been through on getting his truck, about the state bid and all that. But Sherbalay's are not on state bid right now. But I got on the state website and looked up to find out if they, if anybody was on state bid. And I found out that, that they do have a Ford truck in the same style that we need on state bid. So I called this Snyder's Ford Lincoln in Montgomery. They've got the state bid on these trucks. Uh, he, he, he asked me what, you know, what kinda truck I needed and I told him. And I told him I needed a service body on it, you know, to put equipment in. Uh, he pretty much inspected out. It's like they do on state trucks or any other state bid. He just put the basic stuff on it, which is, and it don't have a lot of extras on it. It is a two thousand nineteen Ford F-250 crew cab, four-wheel drive. And, uh, it's got the six-point-two-liter V-eight, uh, it's got, it'll have the service bed on it, utility bed, just like our other trucks do. Uh, price he quoted me was thirty-four thousand nine sixty-seven. So...
But on that, if, if these other trucks you think you've been buying, y'all gonna have the money in your, uh, is this...
Yeah, we, several years ago, even before y'all were in office, I, I gave him a list of all my vehicles in my apartment. And what I wanted to do then, and I've been able to up to an extent, I told him I'd like to get one truck a year till I can get back up to where I need to be. Uh, back in fifteen, I got two meter-rigged trucks. Uh, in sixteen, I got a, a truck with a service bed on it, uh, that one Brian Logan drove. And then seventeen, I got the one that I'm driving. And eighteen, I happened, I didn't purchase one in eighteen. But it's...
Well, that's the same you need, Marla, if you're, if you're using.
I'm gonna get this truck. I'm gonna put one of my older trucks on that jet rig truck and use this one for, for the guys to run service out of.
I guess what I was getting around and trying to get around to, and I don't know much about the operation and money in the city, water department and everything, but do you have money aside for buying this? Like I think I've been told before that y'all have so much to spend each year.
Right.
Do, do you have money in your account for...
Originally, in my original budget, I had some money in there for equipment purchases for the shop. Uh, that money kinda got took out because I was trying to balance my budget out. Uh, but as of right now, or as of the end of the month, I had, uh, in my supplies for the, for the shop, I've still got like, uh, rather, close to seventy thousand dollars in, in the supplies. Uh, if I could get that out of, out of the supplies, I, I could still have enough money in my supplies to carry me out through October, through the rest of the budget.
Well, that sounds like a fair thing. That's...
It's up here. Burt's some funds from another department, your equipment, uh, or reserved for your supplies.
It would, no, I, I think we've probably got enough in supplies to make it, like the rest of my budget.
Buy that, yeah.
As far as buying materials and stuff.
One thing I have a question about that. I think you know that our money is getting...
Oh, yeah.
You know what I'm talking about. And, uh, we're gonna have to watch it. Of course, something like that, you gotta have to operate. It's a different story. But still, I just, you don't wonder where it's gonna come from. But our money is getting pretty close now.
So, right now, this truck in this picture is only used to haul the jet rig?
Yeah.
Which is used a lot.
Yes.
It's used a lot.
It's gonna use the whole lot.
I saw it running last night toward Hillfield.
It was out in Hillfield late last night.
Yeah, and I saw it on the way out there.
Well, do we have to make a motion or something?
Yeah, we have to wait until we can run it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, okay.
They will show us his deed and the cost.
Yeah.
Today. Any other questions, Rodney? Maybe any?
Thank you.
Marla, you don't mind, I'll let you tell about our, uh, trip to Tuscaloosa and your thoughts.
Okay.
And kinda discuss the plan you put together, present down there.
Three months ago, I guess it was, now, the mayor and I went down to Tuscaloosa, probably. Oh, Mr. Cooper, who is the state, uh, director? Director of Department of Transportation down in Tuscaloosa. We met with him and, uh, James Brown, or Spidey Brown's what we all know, we may have met with him and a couple of others. And they invited, they asked us to come back later. So we could, maybe I put a plan together for some streets that we wanted possibly to get paid asphalted. So we put a plan together.
Rodney, a little rundown of the streets we...
Okay.
Had in mind.
Uh, streets that we're talking about, and I'll just describe them to you, fellas. You may not know them by name or number, but, uh, Seventh Street runs from the foot of Mitchell Hill across to Highway Seventeen. That's one, one road that's traveled quite a bit. People from Weston come down the hill to Coach Rock to try to get to the Elementary Street or High Street. And that way a lot of times. So it's a pretty heavy traffic road. It's, it's got some bad spots in it and cover that's gonna have to be replaced. And, uh, so we, actually, we picked about five streets. We wanted to try to be within reason, hoping that if we didn't ask for too much, that they would... That street, uh, back, we got a little baby street, okay, that street. The street that comes off of Forty-three there at the Weaver Hard, uh, Weaver Hard Bridge, however. Goes down and turns and comes out to Quackles. Comes out into Two Seventy-Ades. And then, and then we're following up around to the right that comes out at the stop sign there at Coach Rock. We'll finish that, that strip there. Uh, Ten Tha' New that goes up to the Elementary Street here by the City Hall. That street.
That street.
Excuse me.
That is...
Same street, yeah. Uh... And there may be one more I can't... Ten.
Get up here.
Yeah, about, runs up to the Elementary Street, yeah. Yeah. So anyway, we estimated those cars would be around two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to get those to them. Uh, so we went down and brought them out, submitted that and showed them what we had done, our downtown revitalization and how we were trying to connect some of the roads that connect to that, oh, and Second, Second, uh, Second Street that runs past the City Hall, uh, the old PlayStation.
All the way down past the city parking lot to the...
Yeah.
Gas station there, to the red light?
At, at the red light, basically at the red light, uh, and, and depending on... I think we can make it at least down to, to the City Hall PlayStation.
From the Yamaha shop?
Yeah, right. That street. Uh, when Karen Quentin did some work over there in that parking lot, there's a big section of buried between the highway and the sidewalk that's basically counted, so we're hoping to get all that done. Anyway, we estimated it'd be around two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars cost to do that. Uh, when I explained to him, uh, that, first he asked us, well, how much skin are y'all gonna put in the game? And, and of course, we, we said we really didn't have any skin to put in. That we just purchased a, a pothole fixing machine and, and we planned on using what, what gas tax money, gas and oil tax money we had to do chip and seal. And we're still planning on doing that. Uh, I said, but we will, if we can do some of the work ourselves, uh, which one of the things would be replacing that cover down on Seventh Street. So then he said, well, you're, you're looking at two hundred and fifty, you're, you need two hundred and fifty thousand. And, uh, of course, we said yes. He said, well, normally, we don't do this, basically said, we don't normally do this kinda thing. He said, if we do, we ask for, uh, was it twenty percent?
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent. So, we did get an agreement with them that we should have something in, in writing, uh, within the next few days.
They're drawing it up.
They're drawing it up now. So we were able to get two hundred thousand dollars, uh, from the state to do city road work here. So we reached that.
We had to pay, we had to pay forty thousand if it's twenty percent.
We're gonna, we had, what, what was it, Mary?
Well, they want us to put, if they put two hundred thousand, two fifty projects, they want us to pay the fifty and then back two hundred.
Right.
But the way I understand it, they'll be the only one looking over our shoulder. We'll have a bunch of...
That's right.
Engineering firms and all that stuff coming in. It'll be a real, real working money we'll get. And, uh, they listened to the plan. If we didn't carry a plan, we wouldn't have got any money. Cause they looked at the plan and thought it was feasible and that the money was in the right neighborhood with the right estimate that Mike got together.
I, I think, I was real pleased that we were, we'd get, I didn't know going down there if we could get anything or not, you know?
We done a good job to get two hundred.
Yeah, we tried.
All we need, we...
One man told us we wouldn't be getting anything. He used, he used to be a mayor.
So, that's a little bit of good news, I think.
Yeah.
It's two hundred thousand dollars worth. That's pocket change.
But it was worthy effort. I give Mike a lot of credit for putting the plan together. If he hadn't had a plan, we wouldn't have brought anything back.
I think the plan made a big difference.
But when we left there, Mr. Cooper told Mr. Brown to have his men draw up the agreement for the money. So we're reasonably sure and positive that there's no strings attached. We're gonna give that two hundred thousand.
I believe so.
Good job, Mike. Good job, Mike.
Yeah, boy. Um, we've been approached, and this is just something that were thought today by some folks wanting to bring a sports complex to Hamilton, Alabama. Uh, basically, you think about softball and baseball, but this goes, the new sports concept goes way past that, uh, softball and baseball. It includes soccer, uh, other field events, uh, also tennis. Basically, what your developers are doing now, they're coming to the cities asking for a spot, a likely spot of land, forty, fifty acres. And options may be on more land. And they build and, and hire workers to run this. The city basically would get the concessions. Uh, and we'd, we'd have a, a real nice concession stand for every event and we'd get the money off that. But the developer will, will build the complex, lease it, and the games will support the repayment of his debt. But the city's part would be pretty much, we'd get the take from the concessions off of it. And I just wanted to ask the council if you think we're somewhat interested, not interested, wanting to know more about it. Tammy and I got to hear a, a little bit of the presentation, uh, not in total detail, but, uh, somewhat of what goes on now. And we, at the last industrial board, but, um, that, the man that came and proposed this, uh, was out of fit. And he was thinking, uh, to put the complex in our new industrial park down by I-22. My thoughts on it is that I'd kind of like to find him that forty or fifty acres he needs and brother one of these intersections and let him develop at another intersection, save a park we could, uh, or fifty acres at the same intersection, but if we could get it at a price that we can afford. But I just, I, I, I'm having a painful time giving up our industrial site for a sports complex. But I'm just, you know, I'm just throwing that out on the table. And nobody's lined up to bring us a bunch of industries, for goodness sake. We're, we're growing soybeans on the land basically every year now. But the talk is that sports complexes bring you lots of value other than just games. It brings money in people's pocket that they spend on hotel bills, food and gasoline and whatever, uh, sales in town. They come to Walmart, they stop, they do a lot of things while they're in your town. They're here two or three days. Tammy's done some travel with all of her children and...
I've been, I've been to two or three of them.
Yeah.
Let me tell you, it is a big thing. They, one of them was, there was three thousand people there. And I mean, they was eating and they was drinking and they was, you know, and they gonna spend the night and they gonna buy gas and, you know? It's a, I know a little bit about it. I mean, enough to know it about it.
Let's tell them.
Bring a lot of money, yeah?
Yeah, no question, right.
Spoke to our industrial board.
And also bring multitudes and presence.
Right.
He talked about that, and that's something we've been emphasizing is trying to get our exits more developed. Once those exits starts developing, they figured out of, of, um, development and, um... I, I'm not well-versed. I haven't had any children or grandchildren that's been that involved in travel ball and I, I'm, but I, I'm not trying to turn a deaf ear to the, to the notion of a sports complex. I just don't know enough about it, as to where we'd want it located and if we would really like to pursue it, but what do you think, Tammy?
Well, I, I think after leaving the meeting the other day, the industrial board was gonna gather some more information and probably present something, uh, their meeting this month as far as after speaking with some other cities that actually have this type facility. They were gonna be able to give us a little more information.
Yeah. But having gone to these places, what do you think when you get there? Do you think it's a real festive and lucrative thing for communities to have?
I think if you're one of the first people to have it, yes, but as time goes on and everybody starts getting it. So if we're interested in it, I think we need to really pursue it and go ahead and be one of the first and not a straggler.
That's always important.
And like...
Enter that out of trial.
And it's like Wade said, when we go places, when we get the call, we're gonna be in this town this weekend. The first thing I do is get on the computer and, you know, where we're gonna spend the night, where we're gonna eat. Okay, if there's three hours in between the games, are we gonna stay there or is there an event going on? Are we gonna go? So, I mean, it turns into a, to a weekend. It's a, it, it's a, it's a mini-vacation.
Yeah. See, my first thing was, first one I went to, you know, I, I looked around and I said, "Wow, I wish we had one of these." But I've been to Hansville and of course, been to that and Haleyville, and I mean, it's, it's, it's nice now.
I almost got one.
Yeah, and it's nice parking lot. I'm talking about, I mean, they, it is nice.
I just think they'll have diversity in their park or is it basically your baseball, softball, and...
I really don't know, but they've got several fields and going at the same time, you know?
I think that's, that's mostly baseball and softball.
Oh, yeah, but they've got several fields and they're all going at the same time.
Peter Ken spoke to me about the concession, concession stands, how much money they pay off of that. It's several thousand at each of them. Three thousand's not an upcoming number.
That's where they play it, just around there. It ain't just summer or...
But and, and two, the state line don't mean nothing. I mean, they set them up, but they come from Tennessee, they come from...
Yeah.
I mean, in and play, they'll have these tournaments all weekend, several of them are going, you know? It's, it's, it's a big thing. I mean, a, a real big thing.
Well, we don't have anything that's gonna be on the agenda for about Monday night. I just wanted to hear from y'all and see if you thought we were interested enough to research inside and, and maybe try to see what might come out of this, that we might, might do something good for our community and get ahead of the game a little bit, a little ahead of the curve. Sammy says if you're last, well, you're last. If you, if you do, if you do it at time, you, you usually get your name out there and people think of you as a good location. And a natural place would be along I-22. I don't know if the industrial park's the best place or if there's some other properties available. We just need to research that side of things. And of course, we're gonna hopefully hear from some people that's already in this business, maybe from, uh, Mississippi and maybe over around Coe. Hear from some of their directors that, uh, can give us insight. And we might need to have a joint meeting with the industrial board where we can all hear it at the same time. Anyway, we'll, we'll work on that. I did want to make note of the, uh, First Friday events that are upcoming. The gas district's gonna howl out on this, this one. They're gonna have, uh, uh, demonstration from a professional cook that'll be out there on the court, on our court square doing cooking uh, for this First Friday event. And we've got, uh, other, um, things that are coming for First Friday and we're about to come out of Canada and enjoy our First Fridays. And tomorrow at noon at the old city hall, our police station, we'll, we'll be honoring the National Day of Prayer. Uh, so, you're gonna have to attend that. Do we have other matters that we need to discuss today? That's all I had on the agenda for today. All right. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate you very much. You're letting me switch towers with you. That's a good night, ladies.